Mr. Smith?
On Wednesday, January 18th, 2023, notice of this meeting was emailed to the press in the Mainland Journal. Notice was also delivered that day to the A. Harper Township Clerk and posted on bulletin board in Township Hall. Mrs. Bonjorno?
Here.
Mr. Delbarca?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Ms. Hyman?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Seppi?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
And Mrs. Slug.
We're going to do the flag salute, and if we could remain standing for a moment of silence for Maureen Richard, who was the secretary here, and Mr. John Schreiner, who was a P.E. teacher.
The flag of the United States of America and the very public for justice, one nation, under government, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Grucchio.
You got me? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting this evening. This is the time in our school year where I present the state of the schools to the Board of Education. We are beginning to share the budgeting process a little bit more in depth now as we're coming closer to where our needs are, what we can afford, and how we're going to build this budget. So it's important that the Board of Education knows where the school district stands at this time on February 21st, 2023. Okay, so I always ask about what makes a community great, and we are very fortunate in A. Harper Township to be filled with businesses, shopping opportunities, and restaurants. I believe, and I know, we have a family-oriented community that offers more and more recreational activities and opportunities. We're close to medical centers east and south-north of us. Tourism is right around the corner, across the border, filled with nightlife and entertainment in Atlantic City, Ocean City, and some of our shore communities. I'd say we have a low crime rate. I mean, cities have worse, have seen worse than what we see here, and we're fortunate, very fortunate. And we have pride and love for the unity that occurs here in our township. And Township has a rich history of being family-oriented, and that's why our schools have that family feel and our recreation department as well. And we form those partnerships together to serve our students. We have eight schools in our school community. We have 11 buildings that we serve, and we'll talk a little bit more when we get into the facilities piece, just how that's involved. But these are the buildings that we maintain, and they're pretty good-looking buildings, you know, very welcoming, filled with greenery, and they're clean buildings outside and in. The community and school district, we outwork together, and we have the same philosophy of providing learning opportunities for all of our children. And I use that capital A-L-L because we emphasize all children are important. We engage our parents in building businesses into the student's education. We look to build positive relationships. And it's all a great thing, because if you're a property owner in A. Harper Township, you know that good schools improve your property value, all right? And we have good schools here, so we attract folks that want to move into the area. And I believe that educated children become educated adults. And those educated children have community pride, and they give back to their community. And, you know, Mr. Seppi is a recent graduate. Tamika's a recent graduate of A. Harper Township, and they're giving back to their community. So this is us in all ways, shapes, forms, from pre-K school, schooling to high school and what we call our plus program, 21, up to 21 years. So we are very proud of our students, the opportunities that we give them, and they come to school each and every day with smiles on their face. So a school day here, what it entails is more and more each and every year, but we're looking to improve the lives of students, and we want kids to feel a sense of belonging here. We provide a breakfast program. We provide after-school programs, before and after care. We have Talons and Aspire programs going on now. We provide transportation for our students, meals, guidance, exercise, the education itself, music. We give them shelter. We have social and emotional assistance, and we provide them work opportunities. We really focus on learning. It's our priority, but respect, teaching, respect, and good character as well. So we commit, and we have a commitment to the collective responsibility, and I use that a lot with administration. It's a collective responsibility that all students will learn. All students will have opportunities. And EHT, it fits very well with the letters of EHT, that every hand together, we serve every child each and every day. So our mission statement, we work to build that culture in a climate that embraces, engages, and educates individual students and their learning needs. So we begin with relationships, and it's very, very important to me. I tell my staff every September, put the pencils down, open the books, and so you build those relationships with your students. Make those connections with their heart. Learn about who they are, what they need, before making the connections with the mind. So our student-teacher relationship, relationships is very important. It impacts a lot of things, and it certainly impacts the student learning. So to improve student achievement, we have a process that we follow here in the district. So I call it a district-aligned system. It involves a mission, a vision, a mission, a strategic plan, an organizational structure, an accountability system, which is very, very important, and then the evaluation of the whole system. And this is what it looks like. Our vision is to be that premier school district where all students experience success. Our mission is to embrace, engage, and educate, to build relationships, to provide relevant learning experiences, and to provide rigor in the educational process. And a strategic plan, very, very important to Board of Education, to administrative team, to a school district, because this is our roadmap. This is our map. These are the wants. These are the needs. This was a collaborative effort that was developed the spring of last year in 2022, in place our new strategic plan for 2022 to the year 2025. I'm proud to say our previous strategic plan that began in 2018 was fully achieved, fully accomplished. Everything was met and put into place, and changes were made, and changes were sustained. So we have some new challenges ahead of us. We're already working on those challenges, and we have things in place as I speak. Our organizational structure, and this applies to teachers, to administrators, and to the Board of Education. So when you look at this, our focus is building relationships. We embrace. Our focus is on learning, all of us. We're concerned about learning, our staff and students, our supervisors. And our focus is on collaboration. So as a team of board members, collaboration is important, a team of teachers, a team of administrators, and our PLCs, and our professional development. And we all focus on results. So we're looking at that data. How do we produce the data? What do we collect? What do we analyze? And what are our sources to meet the needs of our students? That data tells us what their needs are and what we need to do to improve student achievement, again, meeting the needs of all students. Accountability. These are our supervisors and directors. Submit a three-to-five-year plan. It's based on our plans. You've heard those supervisors and directors stand in front of you, and some of them spoke of their first-year plan, their second, their third-year plan. But they're held accountable for submitting those plans. We oversee those plans, the implementation of their plans, and then they're evaluated each year on the plans. So we look at ourselves as transformational leaders, where we are leading, we are directing, we are supervising, we are evaluating, but also we are self-diagnosing, which is important. Do we have the resources in place for our students? Who's learning? Who's not? We look at that data. Daily, we look at that data. Do we auto-correct? What are our successes? What are our challenges here in the district? Have we failed? Have we succeeded? Do we need supports? Are we meeting needs? Are we consistent? Big word I've used, yes, my staff, last week or so, "consistent." Let's look at consistency. It's important. And then self-renewing, a consistent monitoring and feedback of listening and learning and teaching and adjusting the plan, okay? So again, we meet the needs. So at the end, there's an evaluation of every year, how it goes. I share with the board weekly updates. Every Sunday, Monday, depending how the week goes, I give the board a weekly update. Every month, I update the board and the public on our goals, what we're doing, what's going on in the areas. And mid-year, here I stand, giving you the state of the school. And then at the end of the year, we talk about how the school year went, and as I give you an update on the next, in the next few months. So other part of the evaluation is assessing and reflecting, revisiting our district learning, the work accomplished, the work that's needed. Have we completed something, or if we need to adjust? And then the realization that our work from the teacher level, supervisor level, administrators' level, Board of Education level, our work is never done, because it's a continuous cycle of improvement. We're always striving to be the best we can be. We're always striving to give our students the very best that they need, all right? So that's something that you're always looking, you know, just like technology, things change, and what can we do to have the best so we could be the best? And I always believe, if you do what you always do, you're going to get what you always got. So you got to change. You got to be open to change. So I'm going to give you an overview of the largest school district in Atlantic County for the new folks who are joining us tonight. This is a great introduction into the district. Our personnel, right now we have 1,498 employees that help us run our district. Current enrollment is 7,539. 7,539 students are seated in our buildings right now, and this gives you an idea of the enrollment in each building. Our largest building is the high school at 2298, and the second-largest, it used to be Miller, but it is now the Swift-Slay Ball Complex. So you look at that, board members will have this loaded or doc, so you can take a closer look at it. But these are our student totals, up from last year. Last year we were at 7,441. This year we're at 7,539. Important for board members to know that as we go into this budgeting process, they know they're approving a budget that's going to serve the students. So in enrollment factors, these are enrollment factors that are outside of the students being seated in the seats in our schools. So we have choice students, ACIT students, charter, non-public, special education, out-of-district placements, McKinvento, state facilities, the total of 491. So in actuality, accountability-wise, this budget this year, or for next year, will serve 8,030 students. We are fiscally responsible for 8,030 students. Here's our average class size, based on our English classes, ELA, in each of our schools. So again, it is the average class size. Class of '22, we graduated 559 graduates, and those graduates went off to two-year, four-year colleges, military, tech schools, and the workforce. There's our percentages each year. We share them. Our demographics are updated. It's based on a 2021 census of Atlantic County population, and this is our district population of 7,539, where we are demographically. District services, our district has remedial ELA, K to three, Title I, Title I in ELA in math, special education services, free and reduced lunches at 45%, and our English language learners are, there's 241 district-wide. Curriculum instruction, we offer a great variety of opportunities for our students in the areas of different content areas of ELA, mathematics, science, world languages, phys ed and health, career, technology and VOTEC, social studies, fine and performing arts, special education, media and STEM studies, business and law education, English language learners, all in line with the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Learning opportunities for our students range from AP courses to advanced-level courses. Dual credit ROTC will be put in place in September. Gifted and talented enrichment opportunities, accelerated math, academies and concentrations at the high school, aviation courses and opportunities, and a vocational education program that we put in place this past year with our director, Dr. Carmelita Graham, who is leading the way with that great pre-apprentice program and the new grant, the renewal of a grant that we just received. Special education, our population is 1,261. We're just shy of the state average. We have 16.7% of our population is classified students. Athletics and activities, lots of opportunities for students here beyond the classroom, 30 sports at the high school, 24 at our middle schools, 38 activities at the high school. We see that the numbers of students that are involved, over 2,000 students involved in sports and activities, and then the addition of the Unified Sports, where we have a club and a sport, high school, and the two middle schools. Before and after-school care, our Talons program serves our pre-K population all the way up to the fifth grade for a total of 383 students, almost 100 more than last year. And that's a service to our community, service to our parents, again, makes our school great. Transportation, we have buses that ride over 68 square miles. It's how large our community is. They ride 1.3 million miles a year. That's a whole lot of miles. We have 77 buses out there. We'd like to have more, but this is, we have 77 drivers for the 77 buses, all right? We do 484 bus routes a day. We also have an office staff of six, 10 bus garage folks, 40 out-of-district runs that we have outside vendors that serve them. We have 62 district vehicles. That includes buses, trucks, vans, and cars. And we run over 1,000 field and sports trips in a typical school year. And right now, the average cost of fuel is $3.85 a gallon, and it's rising. So we spend about $751,000 on fuel per year. Food services, we have food services to 11 school buildings, and we follow the school nutrition standards. We have 66 employees. About 1,100 breakfasts are served daily, and over 5,500 lunches served daily. That's a whole lot of food going out in a short amount of time between morning and lunch. And we have 12 full-time employees and 57 part-time employees in food services. Our facilities, we have three supervisors that oversee all the schools, one construction coordinator, and thank you for approving that position. It's working out very well as we're diving into our projects at the moment. Two secretaries, six lead custodians, 79 custodians on staff, 11 maintenance, and eight grounds. So out of the 11 schools and seven ancillary buildings, there's millions of square feet that these folks take care of every day. It's not like, I don't know, maybe me, I clean on Saturdays, and you know, and it's there for six days, and I clean again. This is every day they're cleaning and maintaining a building. All right, our security, which we're proud over the years, it has expanded, and, you know, each and every year, we add to our security department. It makes us feel safe and secure. But these are some of the things that happened over the years. It's important that the trainings are in place. We have the MOA with the EHT Police Department. We have an entrado program that's in place, Alice training for our staff. That has to be ongoing and continuous as new staff come onboard. Each school has crisis plans in place and drills that they do, cameras, and new lobby design to help us feel secure. So let's get into the district. Learning goals are very, very similar. I'm a firm believer, if you don't accomplish it, you didn't meet your goal, it shouldn't go away. You got to work harder, and you have to keep at it, and you have to be consistent, year after year after year, and focus on these areas until they become 100%. We're not there yet, but we're a lot closer than we've been in the past. So we're looking to improve student achievement. I think we all agree that's real important. And other student achievement, we have areas of literacy, stream education, social-emotional learning. Goal two is to support the climate and culture and equity and EHT pride that goes on in our school district. And three is expanding community partnerships. Perfect time, because I need some water.
All right. So goal one is to improve student achievement. Here we're prioritizing literacy for all, which we've been talking about for quite some years, SCL and stream education. So literacy for all, we started with, last year, with training around the science of reading for our elementary school teachers. They are in year two of that professional development, working on the completion of the scaraball rope and looking at the bringing in of the comprehension now. Last year focused mostly on the brain science. Classroom materials have been added for a multi-text approach for responsive teaching. We have students with gaps and needs, and our teachers need the materials to be able to address those through small group instruction within the classroom. In our K to eight classrooms, we added in a program this year aligned to the science of reading in K to 10. Data collection, this year we are able to add in Intervention Manager as an add-on to our data warehouse system through Linkit. It's allowing us to look at how our interventions are affecting student achievement. So we've been tracking each cycle. We just finished Cycle Two data, and looking forward to being able to look at those comparisons and the effectiveness of what we're doing so that we can continue to plan and bring in the proper interventions for all of our students. Math, we have K to five in vision, lots of professional learning there as well. And this year in social studies with the support of the Board of Education, we brought in young citizens and NewZella for social studies in K to 10. And then we still have our ELA and math academies, our labs in the middle school and high school. And then we have additional help with Aspire and SOAR in Miller and the middle schools for after-school enrichment and help. We use a multi-tiered system of support for our students that's looking at the whole child, not just the academics, but also on the behavior side and how we can help support our students with their social-emotional needs. All of this is based on data, progress monitoring, and ensuring that we're giving our students the correct interventions for their individual areas of needs. We follow the I-N-R-S model of using the strength-based approach, so we're looking at what our students do well and building from there to help them reach their maximum potential. Everything I say about data is what we do. We're trying to collect as much information on students because we have students with a lot of different needs. So it's very difficult for our teachers and our staff to figure out what each individual student needs, so we're trying to streamline our data process through our universal screening and common assessments so we're able to hone in on what our students need and be able to provide them with that targeted instruction. And again, adding in those tools such as Intervention Manager and bringing more comprehensive universal screening in for the whole child will help with that process. Here's just a little graphic for you to look at later, to bring it all together, how we develop our Tier One instruction, which is that whole group, so things that you've seen from our content supervisors, adding in those additional supports such as the NewZella and social studies to allow for more of that differentiation, to address the needs of our students. You'll continue to see that through the budgeting process so that we're sure that all of our students have accessed the material, addressing equity in the contents across the grade levels. So here, we're talking about Tier One, which is 80% of our student population, what we do as a framework throughout the grade levels. And here, we have as supports as we move up in Tier Two and Three. So here, we're looking at our after-school programs. We're looking at the interventions we have in place during the day, added in the building interventions last year in each of our school buildings. We added in the Healthy School Specialist this year, and Effective School Solutions at Davenport. Professional development is a big piece of what we do. We have our half-days every single month and our four full days throughout the year, and we focus on a lot throughout that time. We also have job-embedded professional development that happens outside of those scheduled days. For math, we bring in around math workshop with Dr. Milo and Kelly Harmon. Building Thinking classrooms has been also brought in in math to get our students up in thinking and working collaboratively. We brought in Linkit this year to talk about how we can be utilizing that tool and improve our multi-tiered system of supports. And of course, we are continuing and brought back our Learning Lab, which has taken a little break since COVID, so we're excited about that. We continue with CPI training and SCL also to make sure that we're building on those tools for our behavior side and not just the academics. So bringing it all together, as Dr. Grucchio said, it's all about that embrace, engage, educate. And the first important piece is that relationship piece. Knowing our students, knowing the why, being able to give them what they need is the most important, and we have to do that through that embrace piece and building those relationships, and then through the formative assessment. And then we're able to give them and educate and give the interventions that they need, me collaboratively in our professional learning communities, and then get the appropriate professional development to help us reach all of those goals. Stream education is continuing to grow. You've heard a lot about all of the pieces that Dr. Graham is doing as far as the vocational education. We've also added in some stream enrichment at Miller this year to build on our GT, Strengthened and Gifted and Talented. We've also revamped some of our units throughout the elementary, and tomorrow night, we're going to be showcasing some of this at our Family Engagement Night at the high school. So bringing in all the things that we're doing with robotics, engineering, coding. We're sending many students to competitions and really trying to get our students involved with STEM and aviation and leading up to those concentrations and programs that we have to offer at the high school, starting all the way down in kindergarten. And then finally, social-emotional learning. Pursuing Public Health Series is up for you to view. We have a new one coming out soon. We have mindfulness going on in schools. We added convocation at the middle school via purpose prep, which is being ruled out, which is an SCL program. We have our mentoring program that we're running at the middle school, and we have student assistance counselors. We added Effective School Solutions. We have YAP counseling beginning in our middle schools. We have our teen center at the high school. We have lots of professional development for our teachers and administration, and the addition of the Healthy School Specialists. So we are adding a lot around social-emotional learning. We know this is such an important component for both our staff and our students, for everyone to feel safe and be successful in school. But we still have work to do. Literacy is a struggle. We're continuing with our work through the science of reading to really help build those foundational skills. It's an intensive professional development process. It's not easy for our teachers, so we're hoping to see the implementation of that over the next few years. But the addition of those programs and resources, hopefully bringing it to life for our students. We are continuing to build the integration with more equity in the tiered services for all of our students throughout the district, continuing to grow our partnerships with FAA, Stockton, starting ROTC. Want to bring in some more parent workshops? That was a big piece during our strategic planning that we would like to bring more, again, tomorrow night's one. And then we continue to add on to robotics and engineering and our character education and SCL.
All right, good job. Thank you. Moving on to goal two, supporting the climate and culture and our hashtag EHT pride. Our administrative teachers, students, and parents and community support that positive learning environment where all our students are recognized and rewarded for their achievement, progress, good character, work ethic, and respect for diversity. And we do a great job with our Renaissance Program. Each of our schools have recognition that goes on for good character, good work, and progress, progress too. It's not always about the A. It's about, you know, improvement as well. So this has gone on in our schools, goes out on through district-wide, and it's very, very important that we support our climate and culture, and we look for it to be positive. Some of the events that we hold are Pride, EHT School Pride Festival in September, Restorative Practices Equity, MTSS, as Ms. Moss mentioned. I mentioned Renaissance Program, American Education Week. This is Public School Week. We are celebrating and recognizing Public School Week in schools because we are proud of our public schools. We are proud of the work that goes into that, into the schools, and educating our students and support from the public. Teacher of the Year, Ed Services Professional of the Year, Character Education, our Family Nights and Meets and Greets, these are all the great things that we do to support a positive climate and culture in our district. District Equity Committee, and we have subcommittees put in place. We have an Equity Council that is planned for the school year. They've already met a few times. Academic Committee, Culture Awareness Committee, the Data Committee, the Equity Foundational Committee, and the SCL Committee, all birthed out of that District Equity Committee. And this is where staff and administrators come together to review our practices. Again, when I talked about our process and we do systematically, we're always looking to review what we do, what's needed, and how we get better, and if we need training to staff, students, administrators, that has occurred over the last couple of years and will continue. So work to do on goal two, and, you know, there's always work to do, so it's continuous improvement. So we want to sustain that Renaissance- So we want to sustain that Renaissance Program. We want to add incentives to reduce absenteeism, celebrate diversity, professional development. We will continue to expand equity, instructional practices and training, and leadership development, which we do each month with our administrative team. Goal three, expanding community partners. Now that we've been through the COVID process, kind of get held back a little bit in the beginning of my superintendency when COVID hit, but we will continue our quest to reach out to the community, to expand partnerships and cultivate relationships. Here are some of our community partnerships. Atlanta Care has great programs and partnerships with us, with Healthy School Specialists and some of the contests they have that our kids get involved in. EHT Community Pride Festival, we'd be, as I mentioned, in September. EHT Recreation Department, we have a great partnership with them. We're looking to, you know, expand their resources. Children Academy now taking on for our pre-K program, community service projects. Our kids are involved through Key Club, Interact Club, with the toy and food drives and Codes for Kids. Job Fair, Dr. Charlton shared, and that's posted on our website. And then here's the different opportunities for our students and careers, the apprentice program, as I mentioned. To date, there's 18 employers that have partnered with us for this apprenticeship program. So it's expanding, it's exciting. We met with Dr. Graham this morning, and there's even more on there. So, it's very exciting. So work to do on District Learning Goal Three, there's always opportunities to create more partnerships with our community. We always look for grants and seeking funding opportunities to assist our budget with some of the great things, opportunities that are out there for our kids. And we're setting up meeting with business partners. We have a business meeting, what was it, in April, right in this room, where the business partners will come in for breakfast and get to speak to me and our administrators and, you know, build more relationships. And community visits, okay? So here's some of the changes that have been made over the years and have been sustained. So that Swiss Label complex, we were able to merge the three schools together into one. Delayed openings, that was something that was put in place along with the paperless report cards, again, sustained, right? So we were able to make change and sustain change. The data tools, the Linkit, the Lexi, the IXL that's in place, MTSS, it's still growing and expanding, our middle school electives and high school concentrations, talents, full-day preschool and kindergarten, never ever here in the school district. You know, we put it in place, there was some, you know, growing pains and reservations, but again, sustained, it's here and it's expanding. Okay, now we're going to move on to numbers, okay? To the quantitative side of the school district, all right? And our business administrator is going to engage you into a conversation now of how we're going to prepare this budget and what it's based on, and how he does his thing. So here you go, Mr. Smith.
All right, thank you. So I know it's been a long presentation, maybe five more minutes, and we're close to wrapping it up. So, everything Dr. Grucciio and Ms. Moss just went over, everything's great, we're moving in the right direction, but the common factor, everything costs money, right? How do we pay for this? How do we continue to keep the programs moving, keep bringing in certified staff, PD, facility upgrades, technology, right? It all costs money. So, last meeting, we spoke about state aid and our estimated increase in equalization aid in '23, '24, kind of being that last year where we're going to see a big jump in state aid. So tonight, we're just going to touch quickly on the tax levy and long-term debt. So for the tax levy, this is a real quick snapshot of the last couple of years. You see, in 1920, it went up by 3%. We utilized some bank cap. 2021, we went to our cap of 2%. '21, '22, we stayed steady. And then in the current year, '22, '23, we actually reduced the tax levy and gave money back to the taxpayers. And kind of how that looks now, you see in the first column, '22, '23, our current school tax rate is 1.9413. So that generates just over $79 million in general fund levy. We use the term general fund levy because we'll get to another slide with debt service, so they're separate. So we have to think of them separately, not together. So, for the average taxpayer in the township assessed at $210,668, it's about $4,090 in annual school tax to fund our general fund budget. Okay, so in '23, '24, ratables went up by 36 million, which is great. If you look around the township, there's a lot of construction. Dr. Grucci and I had a couple of meetings with the township to talk about upcoming developments and projections on population and student enrollment. And, you know, things like that take time to progress and come to fruition, but there's a lot of things in the pipeline in the township. So, if we kept our school tax rate the same, we would generate $707,000 in new revenue for the '23, '24 budget. So if we left the tax rate the same, the average taxpayer, their assessment stays the same, they would see no change in their local school tax bill, and we would see an increase in $700,000 in revenue for '23, '24. So, what are our options? So we can go up to 2% of an increase in the tax levy. There's some adjustments that the DOE has in there, we could exceed the 2%. We don't really qualify for any of those except the use of bank cap, which is not something we're exploring at this time. So our max would be anywhere from 0 to 2%. So the first column, if we kept our tax rate flat, the example we just went over, 707,000 in new revenue. A 1% increase in the tax levy, so levy and rate are two separate items you can increase. We look at a 1% increase, that's 2/10 of a penny increase in the tax rate, or $4 per year for the average taxpayer. And that generates almost 800,000, so $791,000 in new revenue to fund the '23, '24 budget. All the way on the right-hand side, a 2% increase, again, it generates about $1.5 million in new revenue, and a 2.13 cent increase in the tax rate, so for the average taxpayer would be an increase of $45 annually. Again, that, so that's 0 to 2%, we're talking about percentage of the tax levy. That's what our scenarios are right now. So that kind of leads into the second half of the tax levy. So we have our general fund tax levy, which goes strictly to the general fund budget, funds everything in the classroom, facilities upgrades, technology, all those things. Our debt service tax levy is to pay off long-term debt. So when the district has issued bonds in the past, gone to referendum, there's a separate tax levy that pays for that. So it's a debt service tax levy plus debt service aid received from the state to pay off that principal and interest. So you can kind of see in the current year, we're right around 8.7. You see next year, fiscal year '24, we're at 8.7, 8.8 the following year, 8.7, and then in fiscal year '27, we dropped down to 4.8 million. So when we look at our long-term debt and what our options are for issuing new bonds, we're looking at fiscal year '27 as when we would take on those new obligations. So we want to kind of keep that principal and interest payment steady, and you can see the dropdown is in fiscal year '27. What that equates to is roughly like a December 2025 vote on a referendum. So roughly two years now, January '25 is when we would start planning that. We would start putting project lists together, we start figuring out a marketing campaign, talking to the taxpayers, talking with the board, talking with administration to see what we need to fit in there, and then that would all lead up to a December '25 vote on a referendum. And our goal would be to get that total principal and interest up to roughly $8 million that we see consistent debt service tax levy for the local taxpayers. So where we are now with our debt service tax levy, you see in the first column, '22, '23, our tax rate is .1610, so that's about $339 for the average taxpayer. So annually, and it's been about that the last few years, so annually, the average taxpayer is paying $339 towards paying off our long-term debt. So for '23, '24, again, ratables went up by 36 million, and if we skip to the third line, the debt service tax levy, that 5.4 million, that's a calculation that we look at, looking at our long-term debt, and when that debt was issued, the state promised to pay a portion of that through debt service aid. So we take that into account. Right now, the state gives 85%, so they look at what their share is, and we get 85% of that. The balance of our principal and interest, we make up through our debt service tax levy. So that's budget strictly goes to paying off debt. But if you recall, the board also had, preschool is picking up, it's growing, and we're running out of seats in the classrooms. So that referendum would be used for major projects like that, if we need to do in addition to a school building, if you need to add a gym, an auditorium, a complete HVC replacement in one building, those big-ticket items would go through a referendum.
Right. And as far as a regular 2% cap on spending, that is not relevant to that. That's something separate that we do. We don't order to exceed the 2%, that's another type of referendum, but we're not looking at that, right?
No, we're not exploring that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'll turn it back over to Dr. Grucciio to wrap up.
Thank you. Great, and thank you stakeholders, Board of Education, Central Office Administration for helping build in the presentation, our business office staff for putting the numbers together, our principals, supervisors, directors, and the community. So we're all in this together, this is all for us, and you know, we have a great school district, we have great things going on, and need a little support with this budget. So, that's it, that's my presentation, that's the state of the schools. Again, it'll be loaded, so you guys can see it on board docs if you want to dig a little deeper, but that's where we are right now. Room to grow, and we will, and we'll follow up in June with another state of the schools. So thank you again.
Thank you. That was a lot of information, and I found it very interesting, and it'll be helpful when we do get to the budget in front of us. Okay, Mr. Smith, you have something for finance and operations?
Do you want Mrs. Sullivan?
Okay, so the microphone's not coming on, but we did have, okay, there we go. We did have one question regarding an item that was on the Finance and Operations Committee agenda regarding student debt. So that roughly around $50,000 figure is strictly just student debt that they've incurred through the school lunch and breakfast program. So prior to the pandemic, the district averaged about $8,000 annually in student debt. That number has grown. What we do as a department is any family who was previously communicating, then they work with the building principal to get in touch with the family, make sure that they have all the resources, that they're aware of all the resources that may be available to them.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan, do you have a question?
I have a question. So after multiple attempts to reach parents and to arrange payments and blah, 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 when it's all said and done, if they can't afford to make those payments, what happens with that money? How does that get resolved?
Well, so it goes into the Infinite Campus Student Database System, so a lot of the principals will look at that data. So if the students are trying to take part in an activity or an event, they may say you have to pay your lunch balance or contact food service and set up a payment plan before you can take part in that event. If a student has a debt when they graduate, chances are we're probably not going to recover that. We do try and recover what we can.
So is this something that we can write off?
We can. That's always a last resort. We want to try to collect.
I understand that.
If a student incurs that, but that would be a possibility. So when that happens, we do write it off, it becomes part of our audit at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
One other point I want to make about that is we do have no shaming of students in this district. So it will be, you know, brought forth before other students and told that they owed money. So we took care of that a few years ago, and that was, I think, a good policy to have. Okay, our finance meeting took place on February 15. In attendance were Mr. Price, Mrs. Sullivan, excuse me, myself, Mrs. Solagi, and the administrators were Dr. Grucciio, Ms. Fisher, and Mr. Smith. Transportation, we, Ms. Fisher, who is our Director of Transportation, gave an update on Transportation Department, including current list of all district vehicles. She also, of course, discussed staffing levels, which we're still having a great deal of problem with, noting that the district has 13 open bus driver positions and two current drivers that'll be retiring in June. Ms. Fisher noted that on a daily basis, a lot of this stuff was in the reports that showed up. We have 77 buses on the road, 484 routes. That's incredible to me. And she commented on how hard the staff is working to complete those routes daily. Ms. Fisher reviewed staff recruitment efforts, including online postings, ads on Channel 97, flyers, and attending community events. Food service, I believe Mr. Smith covered everything in there. Our biggest problem again was student debt. The Facility Department, Mr. Smith noted that the Facility Department is working on several projects, both large and small, and is moving forward with the ESIP project. He noted that the project will be presented to the committee at the March meeting. Business Office, Mr. Smith gave an update on staff assignments, reviewed items on the agenda for approval, including monthly reports, tuition, transportation contracts, professional service contracts, private preschool provider contracts, and upcoming electricity and natural gas reverse auction and authorization to issue bids. Mr. Smith reviewed the financial data as it relates to the budget process, which we just heard, and it will be included in, it was included in the presentation tonight. Our next meeting will be March 7, 6 o'clock in the board office, and any committee members or members that have anything that they would like discussed at that time, please contact me. Thank you.
I just have a comment I'd like to add, a question for Mr. Smith. 77 buses are on the road, but what was the total, what total amount of buses do we have? Is it somewhere around 145 buses, actual buses do we have? How many do we have that are operable?
No, we have about 120.
Is it about 120?
Yes.
So it's down. It used to be up a little higher.
Yep. Yeah, we just had about 11 listed on GovDeals that were past their useful life, and we have about 10 more that are coming up to the end, this June 30.
And when we purchase buses, when we lease them, I just wanted to clarify, is that, once we lease them, is that a closed-end lease? Do we keep the buses after the lease, or do we turn them in for new buses?
No, we keep them. So all of our lease-purchase agreements for our buses have a dollar buyout.
Okay, so they become part of the fleet?
Yes.
Okay, so right now, we're at about 120?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Moss, you have something for curriculum?
So, a question came in about, Ed Carter Township High School is a focused school, and so yes, we are in an annual school plan based on the performance of special education population in comparison to the gen ed peers. This is based off the 2018, 2019 data, so we are working with our team right now to provide professional development, working with our screeners and to close that gap and hopefully get out of status this year. But this is the only targeted area of it for improvement, and we're not in any other status with any other category or group.
Okay, Mrs. Bonjourna?
Our committee meeting was held on February 15 at 7 p.m. Those who were attendants was Ms. Hyman, Ms. Solagi, sorry, myself, and administration was Ms. Moss and Dr. Grucciio. We reviewed and agreed upon committee norms and agreed to discuss goal settings in the next few months. We went over the ELA curricular resources and professional learning around the science of reading and implementation of standards-based curriculum were discussed. We revisit the eighth-grade moving up ceremony, and next steps will be for central administration meetings with the building principals to begin the planning. Updates for implementation of Effective School Solutions at Davenport were discussed, and we will continue to monitor the effects and implementation of that. Our health opt-out letters were discussed for the elementary level, just letters to begin to be distributed this fall as they're covering standards throughout the content. Evidence-based report cards at elementary level were discussed as well. Administration will be working with teachers to help make report cards more parent-friendly. Resources for parents are on the district curriculum website. Beginning discussions were had around proposal for dog therapy program at the high school. More full board discussion will continue around this topic. Yap Services will begin their initial onboarding process at both Alder and Fernwood Middle School. We discussed the new information literacy standards and are awaiting more guidance from the state on implementation. Agenda items reviewed were field trips, professional development, the 23, 24 high school program of studies, CUSAC equivalency data and resolution that will be forthcoming for the full board. Adding and adding Dylan's Wings. adding, and adding Dylan's Wings of Change program for student leadership at the high school. The next meeting will be on, I'm sorry, March 7th at 7:00 p.m. And we will be going over overall performance to show data growth and Unified Sports. There was one more thing. I think it cut off my page. Oh, is it? I think there was like three topics. Sorry about that. Oh, data on effective school solutions. And if anyone has any questions, please give me a contact or call me or send me an email. Thank you.
Madam President, can I just clarify something on the curriculum report with Ms. Moss? Ms. Moss, the health letters, I know that they've been adjusted and sent out and tweaked and kind of different ideas. Where do we stand? Is this pretty much final now with these health letters? Or is it going to be, you know, an ongoing process? Will there be any changes other than the ones that have been sent out? What is it that's different than the ones that were sent out before? I mean, I know there was some talk about how they were received and, you know, acknowledged and so on and so forth. Can you just bring me up to date on that a little bit, on the health letters?
Sure. So right now, in K-3, we don't explicitly teach health outside of the way we integrate it into our curriculum already. So we cover a lot of the SEL topics and the topics around family and all of the big concepts already within our ELA curriculum. So we didn't send out the K-3 letters this year. The supervisor of Health MP is working with our physical education teacher. So any changes to, to see if we can bring in some more explicitly taught health lessons? The explicitly taught health lesson in fifth grade gets a separate letter that we discussed at Curriculum Committee before. But in grades six through 12, as health has been taught, those letters have been going out. There will not be changes as far as, you know, I know to any of the letters, just if any of the topics or content change, then we would, of course, add those in since parents can opt out of specific topics.
Okay, because, yeah, there was some question on clarifying when they opt out, how do they opt out? And it's always been they opt out, you notify them, and then they make a decision, they opt out at that time, and then they...
Yeah, if you remember, that was part of the letter that they could, the topics are listed, and then they can list on the letter that will remain.
Okay, good. And one other thing, on gifted and talented, are all the schools, do we have the gifted and talented programs in place in all of the schools? Every school has one, including high school, right?
So at the high school level, gifted and talented is through our course offerings. It's not an explicitly different class. It's more through the offering of specific courses in the different areas. So we have advanced courses in all areas that students can show giftedness. So that's the difference once you reach the secondary level.
Okay, so it's pretty much, but all the smaller schools, including Davenport, have gifted and talented programs in place? Okay, that question had come up, and I just wanted to clarify. Okay, thank you very much.
Dr. Charlton, personnel?
Go on. There it is. Thank you, Ms. President. I just want to take a minute to inform our audience tonight that our district is hosting a job fair for Atlantic and Cape May County on March 10th. It's called the Diverse Educator Job Fair, and the whole focus of it is to recruit diverse educators from outside the region to the tri-state area. But everybody locally is welcome to attend as well. There's going to be 23 districts. As of this day, there's going to be more by the time we get to March 10th. All in one room, all at one time, it's a unique opportunity. So please share that information with your friends, anybody interested in a job in education, not just teaching, administration, support staff, paraprofessionals. We're all going to be in the same space, and there'll be exhibit of student artwork as well. So that's March 10th, and that's from 12 to 4 at EHT High School Gymnasium. And if you go to our website, it's right up on the website, and there's a quick link for a one-minute registration, quick registration there. So please, spread the word. Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion for 7.2 to 7.7.
Second, Mr. Price?
Roll call.
Mrs. Bonjourne?
Yes.
Mr. Del Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs.?
Yes.
My turn. Okay, fun time in the meeting, is when I get to introduce our new employees. So I welcome the following folks, and congratulations, and please stand when your name is mentioned. Amanda Moran, Occupational Therapist at Alder Fernwood End High School. Welcome. And the following nine new employees will serve as paraprofessionals. I will just state which school. Nicole Adams at the Swift Sleigh Ball Complex. Rebecca Albert, Miller School. Joseph Gilson, Miller School. Christina Rowe, Alder Middle School. Kylie Raymond, Davenport. Lakeisha Brown, Swift Sleigh Ball Complex. Jaclyn Cassiano, Swift Sleigh Ball Complex. Pavina Yakimova, Miller School. And Shanez Mazabin, Miller School. Congratulations, everyone, and welcome to Ed Harbor Township. If you would like to go celebrate your new appointment, now's the time to do so. If you'd like to stay on board for a couple more minutes, you're welcome to do that as well, but congratulations again, and we look forward to seeing you in our buildings.
Okay, welcome to our new staff. Mr. West, do you have something for policy?
Yes, to do with, Ms. President, a question came up, is restoration of valedictorian and salutatorian based on class ranking of weighted courses? The simple answer to that is yes. So that will not change guidance. Guidance will continue to use the same weighted formulas to calculate class rank.
Thank you. How about you, Mr. Ireland?
Awesome. Well, thank you for everybody staying. I'll give out the policy committee report. We had our policy meeting on February 15th at 5:00. It was about an hour and five minutes long. Board members attending was Mr. Ireland, myself, Mr. Nicholas Seppi, Mr. Lou Del Barca, and Mrs. Solagi. Administrators that attended was Dr. Gruccio and Mr. West. Others was Mrs. Halkelko. I'll go over the conclusions that we reached. Bylaw 0120, 0120, authority and powers have been rewritten to reflect the following additions. The Board of Education will help develop policy, help implement educational planning, help with the adoption of the budget, and hear appeals and complaints in accordance with the law. Bylaw 0155, board committees has been rewritten to reflect the following addition. The president of the Board of Education or the fourth board member who is visiting the committee may participate in the discussion of any matter, but shall not participate in the final recommendation. Policy 5430, academic achievement has been updated to reflect the following addition. The Board of Education, the Ed Harbor Township School District will continue the tradition of recognizing a valedictorian and a salutatorian. Policy 2423, bilingual and ESL education. This policy is mandated by Strauss estimate and has minor legal changes. The next board meeting, the next policy committee meeting will be done on March 7th at 5:00. We're going to continue the review of the bylaws and regulations. And that is all I have for the board. Mr. West, did I mess up anything there?
Perfect.
That is it. Board President?
Okay, so we need a motion for 8.2 to 8.5.
Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Bonjourne?
Yes.
Mr. Del Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Seppi?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Okay, now it's public comment. While the board values and welcomes comments and opinions from residents, this meeting will now be open to the public with three minutes per person. If your questions pertain to litigation, student, or personnel items, please see the superintendent after the meeting, as the board does not discuss these matters in public. Depending on the nature and complexity of your questions, the board secretary may ask for your contact information so that someone can get back to you with a response. As a reminder, this is a public meeting, and all comments should be appropriate for public setting and made in a respectful manner. So if you wish to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Amanda Snell, 18 Pindale Avenue. I come with good news. I've been meaning to write a letter to Dr. Gruccio, but I just haven't had the time. And I figured it doesn't hurt to let everybody hear of the positive qualities of one of your administrators, Mrs. Kasim Pang, at the Swift Sleigh Ball Complex. I'm a parent and the president of the parents' club there, and I have to tell you that Mrs. Kasim Pang has been nothing but a competent and communicative administrator since I've been working with her. With as many teachers and parents that there are in the complex, she gets back to me immediately. And if she can't, she'll tell me, I will get back to you. If you ask a question, she never gives a wishy-washy answer. She gives you an honest answer, and she doesn't immediately respond if she doesn't know the answer. She says, I'll get back to you, and I always know that she will. She has been present at every parents' club meeting that I've had throughout the pandemic. When I was in an obscure room in the high school at night, she showed up. She was there. And with six parents, three parents, she was always happy. She didn't let it bother her. She is, seems to be very well-respected by all the teachers, and she's accessible. Every time you're in there, her door is always open. And most importantly, what I've seen is that with as many students as there are, she engages with all of them. She, if it's raining, she will be out there with her umbrella, helping them get to the building. She will, at the author visit night that we had, she seemed to know every kid and say hello to every one of them by name, which is, you know, very impressive with how many students that there are. So I don't know if she applied for the elementary principal position that is opened at the complex, but if she did, I feel like this might be one of your easiest hires yet. And if you lost her, it would be a travesty. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't have much time to write a letter, but hopefully it helps your process. Thank you.
Mrs. Snell, thank you for making the effort to join us this evening and share good news. I like good news, so thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Alrighty. So you see the board calendar in your communications? And if there's nothing else, is there anything else from the board? Okay, then we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to our audience for attending tonight.